We're collecting more money because wages went up. All of you that have went to the grocery store are well aware of the fact that, you know, the grocery stores take quite a bit of that back away. So the people actually don't have the money, but government has actually picked up in excess of $200,000 in additional revenue between 2023 and 2025. We should do that in 2020, 2025 again because the state board will spend that. You'll also get supplemental edit money, which no one's talked about. Last year, I think the county got $200,000 nearly in supplemental funds. The city would've got a separate portion. So what I looked at is that if we just take our increase and add just a small amount to it, we can take away this burden. The public pays the edit and the public pays the $45. We've got some businesses out there that pay $45, but the majority of our $45 is collected from people, individuals. And all we're suggesting is giving them a break. We're taking their money they're paying on edit and using it to pay the $45 fee that's been collected over the years. With that, we're gaining the efficiency to no longer have to collect. Now, it's just like TELCITY, I wrote these numbers down. And their edit money from 2022 went from 649,000 up to 888,000 each month or four. So it's a substantial increase. So you're only earning a portion of your edit. Then your two cap and your also your public safety is going up proportionally because it's a local income tax. Larry referred to what we had, $2.6 million. I'll be the first one to tell you, we over collect it for jail. It's restricted funds. You can't use that money to pay a solid waste bill. It's illegal. But we overcharged constituents. I'll agree to that. The process behind this, and Larry brought it up again, everybody collects what? County taxes. The county collects them from everybody. Now, I'll point again, share with you a little bit what we do with these dollars. We run a jail. That jail houses prisoners. If the TELCITY Police Department arrests somebody, it goes to a jail. County funds that jail. We feed them. We clothe them. We provide medical care. When they get into the court system, again, funded by the county through property taxes, we spent over $500,000 this year for popper attorneys just for these individuals. We didn't ask them, are you in TELCITY? Are you in Canellton? Are you out in county? It's county law. We spent around $250,000 just to house juveniles this year and protect them. Again, it's a countywide operation. We run an assessor's office that assesses every carceral property in the entire county for taxation. A recorder's office that records all the documents for the entire county, protects those records. An auditor's office that collects the money, distributes it accordingly. A treasurer's office that does the same thing. And as Larry stated, the ambulance office. You give them a call, the first question is, are you from TELCITY? We may pick you up? No, we're there to pick you up. So our funds that we collect from all of the county including the cities are utilized for these purposes. And I'll share one other thing with you. In our edit funds currently in our plan right now, we spend between 25% and 30% of our edit money currently to support jail and the security for the courthouse in the tune of about $350,000. So our, and everybody that's familiar with property taxes, we're very limited on what we can level. So we have to make additional funds, additional sources to do this. And all this proposal is, is simply to try to give the taxpayers of our county a break by utilizing their edit dollars they pay in to pay for this. TELCITY does not join this. We've already decided at that amount of meeting, if the certain groups want to participate in it, county is going to participate in it, Canellton is signed, going to it. We will pay for the county residents of Canellton through our edit money. And if you so choose not to do that, by all means, it's your choice. It'll just be billed out of $45 on our solid waste as they currently do it. So that'll be you guys' call. But that's where we're coming from. And that's where we're leading this decision. Any questions?
The citizens, as you mentioned, that are paying the $45, are they all the citizens or just the property owners?
It's bizarre. I tried to figure that one out because I, at one time, I thought if you had an electric meter here, you received the bill. That may be true if you're a property owner. That may be true. Some of the rental people, I know that they receive the bill. Part of the rentals I know, I asked them one time, I said, well, can you bill them directly because they have an electric meter to the rentalist? If you ask them the property owner, in event that they don't pay, we'll be responsible for the bill. And if you go beyond the payday, I think it doubles. And then by the time if you have to go to court, it becomes even a multiplier beyond that, and then they get the easy payment plan started. It is just a nightmare what they have to go through to collect funds.
So it's property owners that are paying?
Sort of. By the way, sometimes you wind up, some people will have two or three bills for some odd reason.
People that don't own property will benefit from that $45?
They don't pay it.
I don't, you know, the people, okay, give me an example of a person that doesn't own property, renter?
Well, I'm trying to, we're gonna have to come up with the money to pay for what we lose for the $45. Is that gonna shorten what we can do with these?
Your edit money?
Yeah. Is that gonna?
It will have, you don't necessarily have to just pull it out of edit if you want to take it somewhere else. Edit was an area that in excess of $200,000 for the group in general. And if we just basically stuck with 2023's numbers, we had $200,000 of the $300,000 already collected. And then going back through the process, I talked to Baker Tilly and I first suggested we take $300,000 off the top. I said, no, you can't do that. You have to contribute it. And then you can hand it to the solid waste. My theory behind that when I suggested that, we can go back to each energy bank if that's something that is required. It's not a big deal. But if I need to give Connie a dollar, I don't want to have to give it to Larry or pass it through everybody down there until Connie gets it. Because all it does is create a lot of inefficiencies along the way. Whereas if we're paying for that edit money, we're gonna take the edit money, we're gonna send a receipt to Connie and tell her that X number of dollars was applied to the solid waste and she'll have to book it so it's on. That's what the state board and county back said we have to do. Now, if we need to pass it through the whole circle for some unknown reason, we could do that. Those are the kind of things that brought up.
Randy, one comment, I think you'd probably agree. The billing and the $45 and who gets a bill and who doesn't is a mess.
You look at it.
It's a mess. I cross my eyes looking at it because it's just, there's no rhyme or reason.
Exactly.
I would hope next year that the solid waste board, and this would include Mike now, that we would consider hiring an accounting firm such as Baker Tilly to review the billing process, to review what's required by state statute, to review how the board, a lot of things, and almost restructure that. Look at consolidating, maybe Spencer Perry County could have a solid waste and save taxpayers' money in TELCITY and Spencer. Maybe, I don't know. Would it be nice to find that out?
The board will continue. And the solid waste will continue to provide the services they need in the opportunity. Now, the challenges for the board going forward is to take a look under the hood of this, see what we do, why we do it, and whether there's efficiencies, what we lay or lay out. Maybe there's certain things that shouldn't even be taken. I don't know. And that needs to have some time spent on that to determine what actually there. But we, it's simple things that we, I think we somewhat fail. If we can take our old paint and put newspaper in it and/or sand and/or kitty litter, it turns it into a solid waste, it can be disposed substantially less than what a liquid waste is. Puncturing a paint can turns it into a piece of recycled steel versus a hazardous waste. There's a lot of things that can be done. I think that's the area we need to pursue as part of solid waste. But this proposal is to take the $45 burden.
Right. I know that wasn't quite in line with what we're talking about, but I think it would read, you know, say the counties share in the city in Troy and Canellton. If we look at that and find ways to cut costs, that would reduce, if we choose to fund it by edit dollars, maybe next year it's only $75,000. I don't know. I'm just saying, it's ways to cut costs.
But why do TELCITY residents have to pay twice? We're part of the county.
So the county, city residents only pay a part of their taxes to the county, right?
What do you mean part? We pay the same tax rate that the county residents pay?
I thought that, like, most of our tax dollars goes to the city and then a small sliver will go to the county. It's not like we would pay double.
We're part of the county, Phillip.
TELCITY's got a tax rate.
We're the county seat. TELCITY.
I understand, Larry. But what I'm saying is, we pay, we're not gonna pay.
I think what you're trying to say, Phillip, is if you've got a $3 charge for taxes, probably, and I haven't let the rates forgive me, but maybe 50 cents out of that or 60 cents of that is actually a county rate. You have a county rate, a school rate, an airport rate, a library rate, the city rate. They're all accumulated into the base rate that's collected in the city. Now, again, see, I'll get back to the point, we don't collect enough levy funds to support the services of the jail, the courts, the popper attorneys, the housing of the juveniles. We don't collect enough money at the county level and to support the courthouse operations that are countywide services. We don't collect enough levied property taxes to whatever.
My point is that I'm capped at 1%. If you live out in the Highlands, you're capped at 1%. It's not like we pay 2%. We're not capped at 2, we're capped at 1.
Give it to your purse, Phillip.
Yes.
But as, you know, and what I did, instead of going through here, because I didn't want to get into this discussion of this one needs to pay more, this one needs to pay less, I took the edit. The way the edit is actually split right now is the county gets 78.42% and some additional. TELCITY gets the 30%. Canellton 7.45, and Troy's 0.38. And rather than saying, okay, it's less residents in the county, we're gonna just pay proportionally to the amount of people and the amount of $45.
Wait a minute, Randy. Let me interrupt you. You say there's less people in the county.
TELCITY is part of the county. I'm sorry. TELCITY is part of the county.
I'm just not denying it. As is Troy, as is Leopold, as is anybody. Exactly. And what we do is we collect money from all residents and run the jail. You understand that?
All residents?
All county residents that pay property taxes. It is elected, we run the jail.
Yeah.
And the jail provides services to everybody.
Correct.
We also run a court system. We collect taxes from all county levy property taxes.
Correct.
Utilizing that money to run the court system. We also are required to pay popper attorneys.
Fair? I'm making a point of order.
All of them.
We're not here to discuss what the county does and doesn't. We're here to discuss and we're gonna do this agreement. The question would be, you're sitting there explaining all the expenses, yet you can take the money, the $300,000 you're gonna spend, and you can use that toward the other thing you're talking about, correct? You can use that as edit money for the jail, the courthouse, or whatever you want.
So in other words, okay.
You can do that, yes or no?
We can take our portion, which we're paying 100.
Yeah, but that's it. If you're saying excuses, what we need to do is this council has decided we wanna give back $101,000 to the county.
No, no, you're giving it to your residents who pay the.
No, we're giving it back to the county recycling system. And like Larry stated, there's two counties in the state of Indiana that does not have it on their property tax. Yet, if you say, put it on the proper tax, everybody says, oh, it's a tax, it's a tax. But you're paying, you're gonna reimburse what you all wanted to do with tax money. What's the difference? It's taxes a tax.
Do you understand the $45 charge?
I understand. I was here when they started this. Were you here when they come in here in 1990 right there and told us how this was gonna be?
No, and I wish you would explain to me why they charge what they charge.
What was like $22 then?
Well, I don't care if it's $22, why did they do what they did?
You have to ask the people that was in charge of that. They could've put it on, they could've put it on the county tax roll and everybody throw the fit.
Initially, it was on the, it was initially funded by the COAT back then, in 1994.
I mean, taxes a tax. To make it fair, why, why is the county going to cover the county and say, well, TELCITY folks, we're not gonna pay for you. We want you to pay it. Now, blame that to me. I'm a taxpayer and I pay, why won't you cover my $45 costs?
And we would do that if you would say, okay, guys, let's quit the edit money and the county on edit. And then we'll pay for all of it.
I don't think you can do that.
I believe the county is recycling.
I'm gonna yield to my city attorney because all this stuff is interlocal agreements that were set up years ago with local edit tax, COAT and all that was set up by interlocal agreements.
And county outs and income taxes, income taxes, county outs and income taxes, just like LIT uses local income taxes, they changed their names on. It's the same thing. If Chris says they funded it with COAT, they used to fund it with the same mechanism that provides the edit.
They did initially when they started it, for a year or two. Supporting newspaper.
Can we add, can we just add this to the property taxes?
I mean, you guys could do, what, you could charge it to a trash?
No, we can't add it to property taxes. That's county's responsibility.
I mean, that's what I mean, for them.
The county can do that.
We can't.
I'm asking.
For TELCITY residents, you guys could do that.
What I'm suggesting is.
We don't say county, we don't do county.
I know you don't do county levies, and we can't just levy the property tax anything we want because of the restrictions. Stakeholders this year will raise 5%. That's what our restrictions, you can't raise it any more.
I understand all that, Randy.
But see, because you're, all we're doing.
It's hard for, hard as a citizen to say, why are you funding Leopold, Ron, whoever? But comes TELCITY, hey, we want you to give us a hundred some thousand dollars. If you can do it for them, why can't you do it for us?
Okay, Leopold gets.
I'm just using that as an example. If you're going to.
If we're gonna use Leopold, let's use it. If you look at the portionally separated edit money, it goes to Canellton, TELCITY, Troy, and the county. The county as a whole. So Leopold being an unincorporated city, all within the county, and we're paying for it out of the county's share. TELCITY gets a slice of the pie as does, Canellton gets a slice of it as does Troy gets a slice of it. And all we're doing is utilizing the taxes that are paid by the individuals to help them by offsetting this $45 fee that they're being charged for our solid waste. And if you choose not to support the local residents, that's your fault. I mean. You know, the bills will act on TELCITY residents.
Can I, I do want to touch on that billing. And this, I'm not saying one thing or another, but I'm just gonna say, I do know Chris Wheeler would, from what I gathered in our last solid waste meeting, it would be a challenge for her to bill that out based on the software from 1990, whatever. Extracting that information without having to almost start over. I, I'm not just, I'm just going out so everybody has the information so they make a decision they know. That may not change your mind, but at least you know that it's fair. Does TELCITY have to be part of the solid waste program?
I don't, I don't know. That's a good question. I know the county does not have to be, have a solid waste. Now, if the county adopts it, whether it's mandatory, I don't know.
The reason I say that is because, and it's no secret, TELCITY has curbside recycling. We go around, we pick that up. Solid waste is generous. They allow us to use their trailers and a truck or what have you. That's very nice. But we provide the labor and I would call it the commodities, the materials, the cardboard, the plastic, the glass, whatever. We take it up there to them and the county in turn sells that and makes, or the solid waste, sorry, in turn sells that and makes revenue. What would keep the city from keeping those commodities, selling them ourselves, and eliminating or reducing trash tags? I mean, and then that would, that would really mess up the finances on the solid waste, that program too, because they would be short, and I don't know their, how much TELCITY gets, but last year, I'm trying to find this running total, they collected almost $40,000 in recyclables that they sold. Obviously, not all that's from TELCITY, maybe half, maybe three quarters. Really don't know. There's probably no way to know, but.
I don't think they ask anybody where.
No, they don't. And that's what, I'm not.
Nobody knows.
But the solid waste does provide a good program to the community for county residents, and I will say that for the trash drop. They, they have, I was shocked, and I'm sure you were too, at how many trash bags that they brought in at the Canellton, at the site total was a tremendous amount. I was shocked how many people take their trash up to the center of Canellton. It really was.
And recycling.
And recycling. I mean, they had 11,000 from Canellton alone, just as in trash bags up there. And Branchville, 12,000, that's, that's a lot, for a dollar fifty a tag, I think. So, you know, just something to note.
It's a lot of discussion for three cents. Was it three cents a day?
I see where Larry's coming from. I see where Larry's coming from, I see what Gerald's saying. But I also see what Mike's saying. Mike's like, I was thinking on my line, I gotta think of the people out there. Most of our city residents are close to elderly. We're more of an elderly community. And we have to be better as a board to adjust our numbers to fit things like this and kind of give back to them a little bit. That's the way I see it. Now, I may be wrong. You guys say, oh, Steve, he don't want to talk about it. That's great, I don't care. This is my thoughts, is just that I really wanna try to give back to these little ladies out here that's, they might have diabetes, they might have, they can't hardly buy food. And I knew people years ago when I was a kid, they ate cat food around here. So, I mean, when you see stuff like that and you think, my God, $45 isn't that much to give back to them, honestly. That's just my thoughts.
When the money can be spent, you know, front wall protection, the sidewalks, the streets, paving.
We do have $130,000 in ARP. I mean, we could try to find it. We could look at other areas of the budget.
That's what I'm saying, Phillip. Just maybe we could look at this, you know.
I can't get past, you're asking TELCITY residents to pay twice.
See, we keep going back to this paying twice part.
It's true, Phillip.
How is it again?
It's true.
Well, I need to contact the State Board of Accounts and get me educated because I know that.
They're asking us to, they're asking Ross to use $100,000 of our edit funds to pay when the county, we're part of the county, Phillip. When the county has.
I know we're part of the county.
$2.1 million sitting in the bank of edit funds.
That's not.
Why don't you use?
Okay, Larry, those edits is what supports our county crossroads match. It also paves our roads. It's not our excess money. We can stop paving roads. And if it makes it more palatable to you, would you like to contribute $100,000 of your edit money to help fund the jail? So that it doesn't, doesn't worry? Would that be that palatable?
We're already paying that right, Randy. We pay county taxes.
It's not suffocation. We need, we need. We can't use the taxes. It's not, it's not.
Let's finish, I'll get to you last, Laurie, okay? Thank you. You may answer your question.
I mean, we could, we're limited in our levy, that's how property taxes work. We can't just on the trailer say, we're raising everybody's property taxes.
We have the same thing here.
Exactly.
We've got all the revenue, so we can only take in so much money.
Exactly, all the same vote. Larry would prefer to fund that thing, the jail, versus paying for a, helping the residents get back for a, I think he'd do it. Because he uses.
He's saying the residents, the homeowners that are being paid, they're paying the $45. Those fortunate enough to own property, they pay it.
Mike, I don't think it's just property. And I won't swear to it, because I'm not sure how this is our system.
Some landlords probably pass it on to their tenants.
Or you have, I don't understand.
So I'm gonna try to, I know, I don't want anybody getting tensioned. I know it's a very important topic, and I know a lot of people are very passionate about it. Council, you've got a copy of the interlocal agreement. You've gotten copies of the edit plan, which, like I said, you go for it, and that passes, I'll amend it, I'll make it work, I'll figure it out.
We don't vote on the edit plan, do we?
No. And that's okay. I'll figure it out. That's my job. But you've got some communications back and forth about what State Board of Accounts suggested in the interlocal agreement. I do have some reserve on that, but we can figure that out. The next step, does the council want to vote on it tonight? Or do they want to have a special meeting to get time to digest it, talk to people, gather information? Or do they want to just wait till February the 5th? I'm just looking for a direction. That's all I'm asking.
The only deadline is that Chris needs to be there to get the process.
Yeah.
And then, and then if she needs to sort of separate naming, she could do that. But she needs to know whether it extends the F number or not.
I think if she knew by the 5th, I know, I think she talked more towards the end of January, but if she knew January or February 5th, one way or another, I don't think that would put her too far behind. I'm sure she could extend the billing date out maybe. I don't know. But it may not even be a problem.
Well, see, that's the only thing that'd be critical, to make sure she gets a bill.
Sure, and I agree. It would, so.
Is a motion in order?
There is a, yeah, sure.
Okay, I would move that we deny the interlocal agreement as presented.
Okay, there's a motion to deny the interlocal agreement by Councilmember Clemon. Is there a second? Second by Mike Finley. Further discussion?
I would like to alter that. I would like to make another motion that we table this, take our time to study it, see what's right from wrong before we rush out there and sign something that I quite don't understand totally.
Or turn it down.
Or turn it down. I'm not saying turn it down, I'm not saying whatever, but, well, this is the first time I looked at it. And Kelly sit there and tell you, she's a fact, figure girl, I want the facts and figures before I sign on it.
And I respect that, that, you know.
I mean, you come in here and there it is. I understand there's only X amount of dollars going around around here. I understand that very well. And I remember when they set it up, every property owner gets a damn bill. If they don't pay it, you have to take them to the court and try to get that money, the county does.
What about a rejection, Randy? What about a rejection in the cost of $45, say $45?
You're not gonna get the same stamps and billings and clerical, because see, we in effect can shut the office down, the ANA, because that will no longer be required. They don't have to take it to court, they don't have to hand that, they don't have to have to. So that's why we went from 370 to reduce it to 300,000, because in effect that says death. So that's where the state's savings come.
Is there any other options out of solving this out there on the table?
You know, this is just the first one, and everyone seemed to think, because of the excess edit money in 2023, it's provided this unique opportunity to utilize those funds to give these individuals, we'll pay the $45.
Sound like you don't have enough money going around, you're having a hard time funding the jail, hard time funding this. Is that a true statement that you said?
We utilize edit funds to subsidize the jail and the security for the courthouse.
And who's, and who's responsible for that? The county.
And we pay for the jail and the security.
So you could use the $300,000 that you're wanting to take out of that and put toward that expense if needed.
I'm gonna interrupt. That's, I feel like we're getting a little off the weeds on the whole recycling part.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is, and we're at discussion. You, you know, Lori, I wouldn't call you, oh, but you're welcome to come up to the microphone here, please, and you're welcome to speak.
From August of last year, okay, he went into the donor hole. So, we've been paying a hundred and fifty dollars once a month, one life saving medication. That's just a portion, it's actually almost six hundred dollars a month of medication. So, now that's the beginning of the year, it'll be forty-seven dollars. So, that's worth seven dollars if we didn't have to pay it one time, right? Anybody, whoever, because I've been at the pharmacy, like, we have a pharmacist, has he a pharmacist? I've seen him up there, right? Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. How many people have, because I've paid someone's medication when they had to walk away because they couldn't pay it. I paid it. They don't know I paid it, I gave it to the pharmacist or one of the ladies.
There are, there are quite a few.
So, you know, when you worry about football courts and bull crap like that, and that's all, because exercises, you know, very, very. But, but it's time to start thinking about the people. It's time to stop pushing the old people aside and start thinking about them. Because they're the people who built, not me, not me, but Batman gave thirty-seven or thirty-eight years in the highway to Harvard. And people before him built the roads and built this country, it's time to start thinking about this to the people. I'm tired, I'm fucking frightened, I'm tired of living.
Lori, Lori.
I'm tired of living.
We don't use language, okay?
I'm tired of living.
I respect you, don't do that.
You understand that, I'm just tired of living.
Okay. Anything else?
It's time for people to start thinking about the old people. It's time to start thinking about this little willy-nilly of this crap and that crap. It's ridiculous, that's all I got.
Thank you. If you could come up to my phone, state your name and address for the minutes, please?
Pat York, fourteen thirty-eight, eight ninety, Tel City, Indiana, eight one two five five seven, I'm sorry.
You don't have to keep your phone number, you're good.
Well, I want everybody to, feel free to call me. Okay, I don't know what, it's so hard to understand, I'm a taxpayer. I pay Tel City, I pay the library, I don't use the library, I pay the hospital. I don't use the hospital, I pay all these things. All I'm asking is forty-five dollars that I have to pay to be taken care of by this board. If it means not, uh, PC, if it means waiting on Zurich Lane or Zurich Road, do it. Just wait, that is our money, our money, that us taxpayers pay. Do we not have a say in anything around here? It's not the county, it is not the county. We are here tonight to say, we want our tax dollars to go to the solid waste. That's forty-five dollars, would you say two cents a day? If y'all can't approve that, they sound wrong.
Thank you. Uh, we still have a motion on the floor. Well, Gerald kind of.
First and second.
We have a first and a second, Gerald also, was your motion to table or was yours making a modification or what was yours?
Your motion is to table it, till I can have further time to review it and get some answers.
Okay, so let's go to the first motion, since it was done first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed to it.
Yeah, I'm aye.
I'm aye into a aye though, so it's confusing, but.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
This was the first, this was the first about a proven.
Rejecting, rejecting.
To deny the.
And Gerald, what's your vote?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have a tie.
So, we hit two and two, okay.
So, the motion dies.
Correct. Is there another motion?
Gerald made the motion to table, but there was not a second.
No.
Yet.
Yes, it's not your motion, so we have a motion made to table, is there a second on that?
Second.
And let's get some answers on it.
Okay, and you'll make a decision, do you want to have a special meeting before February the fifth? Or do you want to wait till the fifth? You just need to let me know because I need to advertise it and get stuff ready. That's all I can, I'm just asking for guidance.
Who would pay for that study?
You know, if you want to do a study, that would be up to the solid waste probably. They would be more than likely the one, I would think, Randy, would you agree that would have to cover a study on the the operations of the solid waste, cost, billing, how it's done, you know, who, the whole billing, billing structure? No, you're not, oh, no, I agree, yeah, that's a whole year project, I would think.
This becomes a board decision. This is an initial decision on, a decision on funding with twenty twenty.
I agree, yeah, that's right, and so.
We've got a motion on the floor.
We've got a motion, we made a second.
Call for the question.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Aye, I'm going to say aye.
You don't want to table it, you don't, or you don't want to wait for a meeting?
This is to table.
This is the, this is the, this is the motion.
I'd say aye.
Okay, you abstain, so we've got, so I got, you abstain, you yes to wait, you're yes to wait till the fifth? Fifth, fifth. No special meeting?
Nope.
Okay. Hope that works for Chris.
Basically, it will be incumbent upon the board members to do their own investigating, you've got a lot of information here.
I, I did.
I will endeavor to answer questions, um, be patient with me, send me emails, I will, I will begin and answer.
Just like lists, so.
I love lists, thank you, Phillip.
I did, you county members, uh, when I sent out that copy of the interlocal agreement, I hope, I'm sure you're fine, Randy, I did put your email address on there. If the council has questions, I'm sure Randy would be happy to take, reply to email or give you a call or whatever. To discuss is because he's, the guy that, I'm sorry to put you in this spot, but you did come up with a lot of numbers, so I'm just trying to. We better talk about it the person who came up, so. Are we done on this topic?
That is.
All right. How long?
Appropriations.
It was a good discussion, I appreciate everyone's professionalism and trying to take on with it.
I appreciate that.
And having good, healthy discussion, uh, we'll wait and see what comes out of this the fifth. By no means does that mean it's voted down by any means, so.
Chris, we voted to table it, okay, let's move on, please.
You're welcome, all right, item D, additional appropriations.
Want me to do this?
Yep, that is you.
We have a, I have advertised an additional appropriation, I will read it here, the additional appropriation twenty twenty-four dash one. Where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget now thereafter. We are deemed by the city of Tel City, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. Local law enforcement fund for the police department, local law enforcement, police canine dogs, ten thousand dollars. And that is the total on that fund. Then out of the Loewit Public Safety Fund, the police department for the Loewit Public Safety Police Canine Dog, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And Loewit Public Safety Flock System for six thousand three hundred dollars for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And these are amounts that were not included, you know, in last year's budget also, that's why we're asking for those to be appropriated and we do have the funding to be able to do these additionals.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by, uh, Councilmember Kleeman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Finley, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
This does require everyone's signature, so I will pass it down for signatures.
Next is item D, um, sorry, item E, amendments to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance. I'll do this before you call me while you're picking. Orders number one dash twenty twenty-four amendment.
Motion for reading.
Oh, okay, is there a motion for the first reading of this ordinance? Ordinance number.
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Got me to do it while you're signing?
Yes.
Orders number one dash twenty twenty-four, amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance three dash twenty twenty-three, approved by the city council on January second, twenty twenty-four. Water fund, treatment plant, distribution operators, twenty-two dollars sixty-nine cents hourly rate.
Okay, so council, um, is there? Yeah, is there a motion to suspend the rules for second and third reading by Todd Holman?
Motion to approve, second, third, third reading by Todd Holman.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second? Seconded by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, second reading, ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four, an amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance three dash twenty twenty-three. Third reading, ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four, amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance three dash twenty twenty-three. So, that is first, second, third reading, ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four, is there a motion to approve?
All right, I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a reason that this wasn't included with our original salary ordinance?
It was included, but we had the wrong rate down.
Okay.
And so we needed to get the, the correct rate in there. And we had misfigured it.
Changing the rate.
It's just changing their per hour rate and this will be as effective as of January one.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't ask for further discussion, is there any other further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt? Motion made by Councilmember Steen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Beakley, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, meeting times, um, current, you do what?
Want me to handle that?
No, I can't. So, currently, our, we're doing, we was doing five thirty before last year, and we bumped it up for the border works at six, council, excuse me, the border works at five, council at six. And then Monday, remember? And then third Monday would be, again, border works at five and water board at six. Do those times work for you all? I mean, Bron, I know your schedule, Phillip, your schedules are, and Mike still has a part-time job, so he's, he's busy too. Are, are those accommodating for you guys?
Six is fine.
Six is fine for you, okay? Well, all we need to do is, um, Jeff will prepare.
I, I sent one over to Doty that said five thirty and six thirty, but I'll send a new one over that says five and six, we'll send copies to the news and we'll get it posted downstairs.
Let's make the motion on that, just so we have it for the record, just, I think it would be appropriate. Uh, so border works be at five, council members can't be at four.
I like the motion, Chris.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Steen, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Simpson, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. January fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day, um, so we will be off that day. Typically, we would have our meeting out on Tuesday, however, given we have our, um, newly elected officials boot camp up in Indianapolis, all the council, I'm happy to report, is going, um, along with the, the chair and myself, this is a wonderful training program through AIM. I know you guys got a little taste of that in Evansville, and it's a wonderful tool, this is where you get what I call the Bible, that has a lot of good information in you, in the, about counseling, you do these responsibilities and ordinances and you're really going to get a lot out of it. But what I'm getting at is, typical, so we can't have the meeting on Tuesday. Do we want to go ahead and skip that month for like the water board meeting because we're going to have one more tour? Or just wait till February to have our next meeting, or what do you all want to do? We can schedule a special one, it'd have to be the following Monday probably. But it's due, but you just won't have financials to approve this month for the water board, is what I'm getting at.
Or the superintendent's report, really.
I'd like to see us just wait until February.
So, what?
I mean, there's nothing real critical.
No, we're addressing it now, uh, at our next meeting about the agreement with, uh, Block Dealer. And the pumpkin watering thing, I'll fill that later, I'll tell you the story, I know it seems off topic.
I know what that is.
But, um, I just need a motion to say that we're going to, we'll go our meeting, um, on the, uh, third Monday.
Some of it.
Motion made by Councilmember Kleeman, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Finley, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, all right, great, so you've got a meeting times, you've got Martin Luther King Day, um, director's report, or excuse me, mayor's report. I just want to thank everybody again, uh, for your comments earlier on the solid waste, I appreciate it, I know tensions run high with that. But, uh, I appreciate it and, uh, thank you for you all doing your time and research, looking into it, I think that's important when deciding any agreement. That's all I have, so if there's nothing else to come before the council, I understand a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilmember Kleeman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Steen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?